If you wish to speak to any item on the agenda or during the public comment portion of the meeting, please fill out a speaker card. Each person addressing the board shall have three minutes to complete his or her comments on each agenda item for which he or she has filled out a card. The chair has the discretion to determine or alter the time limits on any agenda item. The Board of County Commissioners requests that speakers appearing under the Public Comments section of the agenda limit their comments or presentations to matters relating to county business that are within the board's control, authority, and jurisdiction.
Good morning and welcome to Tuesday, August 27, 2024 County Commission Meeting. I'd like to call a meeting order, and if you would, Pastor Brenda Patterson, would you please come up and lead us in an invocation?
Good morning. Let us pray. I thank you, Father God, for each member of leadership here today. As your word says, let every soul be in subjection to the higher powers, for there is no power of God but the powers that be ordained by God. Just as you sent your son to rule, he ruled as a servant, and I thank each of you for your service to the community, and I pray for help, wisdom, and discernment as you lead us. Thank you for your service. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'll have Commissioner Felder to lead us into pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning once again. I do have, before I get approval for the minutes, a couple -- let me go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the minutes of July 9, 2024, the regular meeting, July 11, 2024, zoning meeting, August 1, 2024, zoning meeting, August 8, 2024, special meeting on the Melbourne Tillman. Is there a motion by Commissioner Pritchett? Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. The motion carries. Okay, I have a couple little small cleanup things. I apologize for bringing this back up again, but apparently I did not fill out my reimbursement for my trip to Washington correctly, and I want to be absolutely in compliance with every cross of the T and dot of the I that the clerk would like me to do. So I need a motion to approve a reimbursement of the funds of my trip to Washington, D.C. I ended up driving, and the reason I ended up driving is because the computers and the airlines were hacked at the time, and I did not want to take the risk of missing that thing, and I did not include that in the motion for approval. So I would appreciate a motion to approve that with the reimbursement for the mileage.
Motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner Goodson. Commissioner Pritchett seconds. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you very, very much. Okay. We have a -- I don't normally like to do this, but we have Councilman Tim Thomas from the city of Melbourne here today that's on a tight agenda and needs to be to another meeting at 10 o'clock, and there's only three cards that we have, but I'd like to go to the new business area of the card, which is J4. And Larry, could you come up, please, and present this to the board, please? Now, this is the approval to extend the existing TDC Mira Amphitheater grant from April 6, 2024 to April 6, 2025, and approval of 1.23 million TDC grant to construct and restore concession structures adequate to serve existing, the future large events. Okay? Thanks. All right. Peter, I really would like you to be on call up here also for some questions that some of us might have. Larry, the floor is yours.
You can tell I don't do this very often, and I don't know where the button is. So, good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to read some of this, but I think I know I've been working on this project for about five years with the Myra Board, so I should know a lot of it at heart, but I'm a little anxious, so please forgive me for that. I will -- I'm going to start off with the request and then touch on --
If you'd move the mic closer to me.
And I'll touch on some of the highlights and certainly take any questions. So the request is to -- that the Commissioners would approve the recommendations of the TDC. The TDC came forward with two recommendations that were submitted through a request from the Myra Board. The first was that the TDC would extend the existing grant that was approved in 2020, which some money has been expended for engineering and architecture, and to April 6, 2025. The way it's going, if you do approve this project today, it would be getting started in September. The second request was approval of a $1.23 million request to upgrade the restrooms in the park for existing events, but also to accommodate events that would be utilized for the amphitheater. Right now in the park, in the park area itself, there's just one restroom. It's on a septic system, and there's only two facilities in there. So there's no way that would accommodate a larger event or even the events, larger events that they have right now. So on the fiscal impact side, as we went through the course of this project, like some projects, there was some vision building, and some things the Myra Board felt that we needed to accommodate. We're going to create a class facility to accommodate the expectations that were in the grant. So the addition of a restroom was, they felt was very vital to serve initially the first phase, 1,000 attendees to the event. It's expandable to 2,000 for an additional $400,000, which we're not asking for today. During the course of this project, as you know, we've been in several inflationary cycles, so the project total cost was $7.8 million for a much improved project despite the inflationary challenges. Some good news is that the Brevard County delegation approved us going forward to the governor for a million dollar appropriation to assist us with some of the inflationary costs, and that appropriation was approved, and it is in force. There's a grant agreement that's been executed to assist with those costs. So the -- I think what's important is to look at the leverage here as well. So we have the state of Florida, $1 million grant towards that cost, 13% of the construction cost. Myra would contribute $4.4 million, which is 57% of the cost, and the TDC grants, if the existing grant continuance is approved today, and the new grant would be -- TDC contribution would be 31%. Would you like me to talk about the facility some, or just stop right there?
No, I have a couple of questions real fast because I am completely confused. Peter, did this not come before the TDC for approval early on?
Yes, sir. This came earlier this year, yes.
It was denied. Is that not correct?
No, sir. It was approved, yeah.
Was it approved here?
No, it did not make it to the board at that time, yeah.
I think there was an agenda item on it, and it was tabled?
No, I don't believe it.
Hold on, let me just --
He's got you.
Go ahead.
I believe we pulled the item.
Okay, that's what happened. All right. Good. Okay, Commissioner Felder.
I would just say real quick, I think when I spoke with Myra at the time, they didn't have all of the costs finalized, and it was my recommendation that they pull it until they could better sort those things out, and so this is them bringing it back here. So I think it was just that simple.
One last question. I think that the biggest concern has always been, where are you going to park all the cars? And I need an answer to that question.
That's a very good and fair question. Initially, when we applied to the TDC, this was certainly a concern that the TDC brought forth back in 2020. The Myra Board at the time worked with the veterans to locate potential shared parking facilities, but it was very informal. As we moved through the permitting process, the county graciously said, you need to get a parking study done. So that was the other thing we were waiting for, Commissioner Felder. So the Myra Board said, let's do this right. Let's make sure that people, if they're not parking on site, there's a plan for where they can park, where we can do shared parking. So parking study was approved. We were waiting for that also. That parking study has been approved by the county staff. It was at a cost of $30,000. That parking study is included in your attachments, and it allows for onsite parking to accommodate the viewed cheering area of 2,500 people. If someone is going to go to a larger event than that, we don't anticipate very many of those in the projections. We only have two larger events. There's shared parking available within a half mile of probably about 5,000 cars. The mall has 4,000 parking spaces. There's public parking spaces and private parking spaces approaching 12,000 people within two miles. So anybody that wants to do a larger event, they would have to permit it. How they're going to transport people, how would they get them back and forth, and show their shared parking agreement to the county.
So Larry, is the parking study done?
Yes.
And did you just give us an outline of what it said?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. We have some cards here. Tim Thomas, come on up. Councilman, welcome. Thanks, sir.
Well, thank you, everybody, for letting me have the opportunity to come up here and speak to y'all this morning. And Chairman Steele, again, thank you for your statesmanlike demeanor. I appreciate you giving me this opportunity, and I'm excited for y'all because y'all have the opportunity to make a decision today that's going to impact the residents here in Brevard County from generation to generation to generation. One of the things I'm so impressed with in this county is the interaction of our veterans with the youth here in Brevard County. It's incredible, and so a lot of that is because of the great leadership that we have of key veterans, many of those that are sitting behind me. But a lot of that, too, is because we have a facility at the Veterans Memorial Center that really kind of creates that synergy where the veterans can come together with the youth of our country and really focus on those values that we want them to have, the values of love of community, love of service, love of nation. And so during September, all the way up till probably the early spring, you can go out to the VMC almost every two weekends, and you're going to see probably about 600 ROTC cadets, probably another 600 parents out there watching these kids compete in leadership and athletic endeavors, again, to improve their leadership skills and create those values of loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and personal courage. And so these facilities and these grants that we're asking for, again, that's just going to improve those facilities and, again, continue to build upon that synergy that has this really unique atmosphere of these veterans having such a major impact on the youth here in Brevard County. And let me just kind of explain how much of an impact it has. Every one of the JRTC programs in Brevard County, and a lot of it due to the interaction of the veterans in this community, are all honor units of distinction. That's the highest rating a JRTC program can have in the Department of Defense. The other thing is, Brevard County ROTC programs in our high schools are some of the leaders in the state, in the nation, in the number of students that get ROTC scholarships and then appointments to the service academy. And I can promise you, a lot of that is because of the impact these veterans have on these students, and then the importance of the VMC in creating that synergy. So again, I just beg you guys again to approve these grant requests, and again, this is going to help us create the next generation of leaders for Brevard County and also for our nation. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Is it Don Weaver?
Good morning, Don.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the council, to the committee. It's my honor, I think, for the fourth time since 2015 to come before this Commissioners and talk about the Veterans Memorial Center. Let me emphasize it as a concept. While veterans, due to the day-to-day running of the center, it's a county park, one of the best in the county, and we operate it on the basis of what we think will give the best impact, not just to veterans, but to the community. And since the state of Florida approved $1.5 million in 2015 to build the best military museum, we think, in the county, the immediately Myra and the county Commissioners of that day stepped on and created the first phase of the park, then a second phase. Tourist development built a new entranceway. That partnership between state, tourist development, the county, and the community, when we got the museum, we were able to raise $600,000 from the community, organizations, individuals, and businesses in kind contributions to remake and put an outfit that museum and really set a high-quality standard. All along, we realized this is a Merritt Island, a central Brevard place where people have loved to come, and while you think about it, in 2015, we connected to 100,000 visitors a year. Now there are far more than that, but once we have the amphitheater, and as Larry stated, the capability to have major events with pay, with payment back to the county for maintenance and continuation of that amphitheater, we have a real opportunity to better enhance the community. In the military, we have a term called legacy. Legacy means what we leave for others, and we really do appreciate in these years, now 10 years since we got that grant for that museum, that you give consideration to this project because it is far more than veterans, and I think one way we can symbolize that, the county has already designated a full-time position as manager and a half-time maintenance position, if you approve all this, to be able to make sure this works. And we'll invite you out to all the events. We'll keep it on the calendars. And again, as a citizen of Brevard who grew up here, I always say and end my conversation by saying there are 74,000 now veterans in Brevard County. We represent them. The Veterans Memorial Center and Park also represents the entire community, and we get many, many visitors from overseas, from overseas and around the country, and that'll increase. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and all Commissioners.
Thank you, Don. Jack Ratterman.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jack Ratterman. I'm at 568 East Hall Road, North Merritt Island, and I'd like to comment on the great job that Larry and Don and Dean have done to get this facility moving down the road, and also with the support of Commissioner Goodson. The amphitheater will add another star to the crown of being a top destination for all those who visit Florida and those that live in this amazing state and unique area. The Veterans Park and Museum is the hub for them, the services, education, and celebrating their unselfish contributions to our nation and state. This much-needed facility will promote community spirit and be a, hey, that's what's happening now, a venue for symphony orchestras, outdoor plays, graduation, and other special community events, enriching all that attend the wide range of entertainment and education activities. There are many other accolades, but would just note some of the brightest, like InBez Analysis of the Economic Impact of $69 million in 10 years, 40,500 annual attendees, and generating 11,500 room nights, heads, and beds. Adding that the North Maryland HOA, the largest HOA and the oldest HOA in the county, is 100% for honoring our community and veterans by approving this amphitheater. In closing, I would like to express the thoughts of the great sports writer and commentary Garland Rice and that annual football. For when that one great scorer comes to write against your name, he writes, not whether you won or lost, but how you played the game, and I hope you make the right call and approve this amphitheater.
Thank you very much, Jack. Cynthia Wall.
Good morning. My name is Cynthia Wall. I reside at 3605 South Tropical Trail on Merritt Island. I've been a resident for 16 years. Thank you for the opportunity today. We are looking forward to hopefully seeing this project go forward. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of a 501(c)(3) established for the purpose of increasing the sense of community on Merritt Island. It's called Community Advocacy for Merritt Island. We raise funds throughout the year from private citizens and small events, and we take those funds and we plow them right back into the community, whether it's through beautification, conservation, or, again, creating a sense of community. Last year, we held our first annual holiday illumination celebration at the Brevard Veterans Center. It was attended by about 500 to 600 Merritt Island residents. We are doing it again this year. We expect to have about 2,000 residents. We're doing this in conjunction with Don and the Brevard Veterans Center. It's a joint venture. We are having to build a stage in the parking lot just to accommodate the entertainment. We like to bring in live entertainment from the community. We involve businesses as vendors, creating a kind of a Christmas carnival atmosphere. We invite retail people to come and have an opportunity to sell to the community, but it's really about a place, and it's a place where Merritt Island can come together. We don't have any other facility like that on Merritt Island. So for us to try to have a community feel, we need a gathering spot, and I think that the Brevard Veterans Center and what this amphitheater could create is our very best opportunity to do that. And without it, we are still a community looking for places to gather, and the resources are just extremely limited. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Now, is anybody else here to speak on this issue that has not filled out a card? Sandra? See, somehow or another, your card always gets down at the bottom. I don't understand that.
I don't know what happens to my cards.
I apologize.
Yeah, that's fine.
Go ahead, Ms. Sullivan, please.
Good morning, Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So, you know, this project has tremendous opportunity for gathering places, even to the various events that they have there for the veterans. The only concern I would like to bring up is pertaining to what is happening around this area, and I just want to put forth a suggestion that would help achieve what the desire is for this. So I'll get to that first, and it is that as a Veterans Park, serving veterans, we'd like to keep it that way, and perhaps if there is a revenue stream that comes in, and of course, you know, hopefully profit positive, that a commitment is made to redirect those funds or a portion of those funds back to the veteran community, maybe with the homeless veterans programs or other veterans programs. Because my concern is that with some of the development that's going around, for example, Woodfield. Woodfield was a wetland piece of property with zone for four units. It was converted to PUD, and as a PUD, it's entitled to 25% more zoning, and somehow ended up with 377 units. The story goes that is being suggested this is going to be short-term rentals, and then you have the fly-in that just got built. And so around that area, you have a short-term rental developments happening, meaning this is becoming a tourist hub. And so if this is serving the community, that is the greater good, and that is wonderful. But if this is just to create a facility as a tourist destination, I think that money should be committed as a veterans' facility to serving our veterans. That's the only comment I'd like to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Okay, let's go back to the board. Comments from the board. Commissioner Goodson?
Yes. As you know, that's in my district, and I think Myra's done an excellent job funding it throughout and been very patient. I would like to see the support of the board for this item. The other factors, I heard somebody mention, this is a question to you, Larry. Has the county already hired somebody to run the venue?
I would say no. The county task force made some recommendations on if the county were to manage it, they potentially would want a full-time manager to work with promoters and a half-time person to manage the maintenance, but that has not been decided, to my knowledge. The directions given, I think, to that task force, and if I get this wrong, please correct me, where to, you know, create the quality me, were to, you know, create the qualifications to go out to the public if the amphitheater is built for an RFP, to hopefully get a sustainable promoter to respond to that. And then, you know, hopefully it can be sustainable from that standpoint or some other alternative. And the Myra Board, we're all business people and residents of Merritt Island and all willing to step forth and assist with anything the county would need for business planning.
Frank, if you decide to hire somebody within the county, would that be brought to the board for discussion prior to the hiring of the person?
If we went out on RFP, we could bring it back. It's going to be county staff. No, that would not come back to the board.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Felton.
I'll just say quickly, I thought maybe earlier in the discussions that ultimately that this would end up with Parks and Rec. Is that not right?
That's correct, Commissioner. That's what we would be looking to staff it through. The RFP process would be through Parks and Rec.
Yes, sir.
Comment to that. Would you not want to hire somebody that had a great deal of experience promoting or getting this venue up and running that has skill? I mean, I don't know if Parks and Rec's got skill, but I don't know, you know...
Right. And the qualifications would be the same, whether we went on RFP or it was going to be internal, of course.
I've got a couple of questions. Peter, so is TDC coming up with a million, 23 million, million point two?
Yes, sir. The TDC approved 1.23 million out of the capital fund. So we've been, basically, we've held those funds. Those are available right now in that fund.
Now, I'm in complete agreement with this project, but I've got some, my stomach's churning a little bit because, once again, here we go with, do we know how many heads-to-beds a facility like this is going to bring in? I know it's important for the county, and I know it's important for the veterans, but here we are spending TDC monies with no real direct knowledge of what kind of heads-to-beds it's going to go. So do you have any idea of what that is?
Sir, I would have to defer to Myra on that.
There is, and there's an economic analysis that is included as an attachment in the agenda request, which addresses that issue, Commissioner.
I wonder why I didn't see it, but that's not neither here nor there. So there has been an economic analysis done. And everybody, Larry, do you have something you want to add?
Yes, there is an economic impact analysis done. It was, in my view, done pretty conservatively. We asked NBEZ to assist us with our base data that was provided by the veterans. And in terms of room nights, or just on select 34 events, of which only would be about half, would probably be the paid events, 40,545 attendees, and on the room nights was 11,557.
A year?
Yes.
Okay. Rob, did you have another comment you would like to make?
I would just say quickly about the heads and beds. I think there is demand throughout the county for an events venue. That was part of an earlier discussion that we had. So I think some of these things that have ended up in our parks could also go there instead of being in the parks, and maybe that would be a better fit. So that's my view.
Okay. Is there any more discussion from the board? Hearing no discussion, do I hear a motion for approval or denial?
Motion for approval.
Commissioner Goodson makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pritchett, seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sure. Okay, let's get back to the resolutions and who is handling the Hunger Action Month resolution. That would be my dear friend, our future chairman here, Commissioner Felton. See, the whole truth of the matter is, is that I've only been the titular head up here. I've had my chairperson on the right that's been taking care of me and my chairperson on the left that's been taking care of me. So luckily for me, I've been able to struggle through it. Good morning, Commissioner Felton. The floor is yours.
Good morning. Nice to see you.
Good morning. Thanks for being here today.
Could you speak a little closer to the microphone, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think I did this for you last year also.
You did, Commissioner.
Okay. Go ahead and read the resolution, and then we'll vote on it, and then you'll be able to make some comments. Resolution for Hunger Action Month. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Florida, where 13.2% of people face hunger and who do not know where their next meal will come from; and whereas Brevard County is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every part of our community; and whereas Brevard County is committed to working with Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida, a member of the Feeding America Nationwide Network of food banks, and educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues; and whereas Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida and their 87 partner agencies have distributed more than 8.5 million meals to individuals in Brevard County in 2023; and whereas Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida distributes 300,000 meals every single day throughout their seven-county service area in Central Florida through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations; and whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to enlist the public in the movement to end hunger by taking action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations to ensure every community and everybody in it has the food they need to thrive. And whereas food banks across the county, including Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida and its partner agency network, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help to end hunger in their local community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize September 2024 as Hunger Action Month in Brevard County, Florida, done, ordered, adopted, in regular session this 27th day of August 2024. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Felton, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. Any discussion from the board? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Thank you all so much. My name is Stephanie Plasios, and I'm the Director of Government Relations at Second Harvest Food Bank. I want to thank each and every one of you for bringing attention to Hunger Action Month and to food insecurity in Central Florida. You know, we live in a really beautiful community with a lot of very generous people, and it's important for us to elevate those of us, our neighbors, who may be struggling to find where their next meal is coming from. Brevard County has 87 partner agencies that are affiliated with Second Harvest Food Bank. These are community organizations that are doing this work every day. They are serving our neighbors who are in need every day. So we cannot do this work without them, and we cannot do this work without the partnership that we have with Brevard County government. Now, our partnership with Brevard County government, I'm hoping, will increase. Second Harvest Food Bank is investing in a large facility here in Brevard County in Melbourne. You all should be getting an invite from me this week to our dedication event, and we would love to see all of you out there to learn more about how we're investing in our neighbors here in Brevard County. So look out for that, and thank you again for your commitment to ending hunger in Central Florida.
Okay, hold on one second. We have a resolution for you. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you so very much. Okay, who is going to be handling the Florida Water Professionals Month?
I am, sir.
All right.
Ms. Marissa King, are you here?
There you are.
I'm going to read this, ma'am, and then if you'd like to speak to it, we would love to hear from you. Whereas the Florida Water and Pollution Control Operators Association, organized in 1940, is a nonprofit trade organization that promotes the sustainability of Florida's water utility industry through workforce development to protect the health of Florida's citizens and to preserve the state's water resources. Whereas this organization, in recognizing the importance of Florida statutes and administrative code that regulate the water industry, acts as a liaison between the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and Industry personnel. Whereas the Florida Water and Pollution Control Operators Association recognizes all those who have played a significant part of operating and maintaining drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater systems in Florida by celebrating Water Professionals Month, which applauds your consistent efforts to promote our health and environment 365 days a year through sunshine and catastrophic storm events. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of August 2024 as Water Professionals Month. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve this resolution.
There's a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Thank you. My name is Marcy King. I'm representative of the FWPCOA. I'm honored to stand here and represent all of the workers in the wastewater, water, and stormwater industry and to receive this recognition. As utility workers, we often go unnoticed and underappreciated despite playing a crucial role in daily lives. Honestly, the less you see of us, the better we're doing our jobs. Wastewater and water treatment industries play a crucial role in maintaining the public health and protecting the environment, supporting industrial industries. We have ongoing, I'm sorry, we have ongoing advancements in industrial, ongoing advancements and adherence to regulatory standards are essential for ensuring the provision of safe and clean water. The FWPCOA is an organization that works diligently to provide the training opportunities and continuous education to members who are engaged in the production of drinking water, the collection and disposal of wastewater, and the collection and treatment of stormwater. We look forward to continuing our efforts to improve and enhance the processes to ensure public safety and environmental protections. Thank you very much, everybody, for recognizing our efforts.
Thank you. Commissioner Pritchett, would you join her for a picture, please? Thank you so much. All right, I believe Commissioner Felton is going to handle this next resolution. Before you get started, Commissioner, I just would like to say real quickly, the resolution commemorating Nancy Higgs is just well-received today. Nancy was an incredible human being. We didn't always get along. That was part of her dynasty. She fought for what she believed was correct and right. Nancy and I traveled many times together to Tallahassee and helped get and purchase the Mullet Creek Islands and a variety of other things. There's not enough things I can say in my heart about Nancy Higgs. She was a wonderful person. Commissioner Felton, please.
And I think we have a group here today of the family. I see a former commissioner out there. Come on, Sue. Come on.
Is that Pat coming up?
Yeah.
Hey, Pat.
Barbara Arthur. Come on.
Oh, my goodness, we got Barbara, too? Holy mackerel, we got the whole crew.
Got the whole stack here.
Good morning, Barbara. Nice to see you both again. Nice to see you all.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to have two motions, actually.
Okay.
So we'll do the first one, then the second one, and then you'll speak, okay? And then we'll take a picture. All right, and it's a deep honor that you would ask me to do this. I have a resolution on behalf of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners commemorating Nancy Higgs. Whereas Nancy Higgs has been a resident of Brevard County for 44 years, and whereas Nancy Higgs earned a bachelor and master's degrees from Florida State University; and whereas Mrs. Higgs' time in Brevard County was filled with public service; and whereas Nancy was a Brevard County Commissioner from 1992 to 2004, a former educator, a university administrator, and a former manager of the Barefoot Bay Recreation District; and whereas during her time in public service, Mrs. Higgs received numerous awards, including the Children's Home Society Legislator of the Year, the 1,000 Friends of Florida Community Stewart Award, the Sierra Club Lifetime Achievement Award, the Partnership for a Sustainable Future Environmental Ally Award, and the Martin Luther King Coalition Special Service Award. And whereas Mrs. Higgs was also a board member for several organizations, including the Harbor Branch Oceanographic Institute, Circles of Care, the Marine Resource Council, the Barrier Island Preservation and Protection Association, and the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program, which I now serve on. And whereas also successful in her professional life, Nancy was the co-founder and president of Education Solutions International. And whereas Nancy Higgs was well-known as a stalwart and dedicated advocate for the Indian River Lagoon; and whereas Mrs. Higgs was also a passionate runner, completing the Boston Marathon in April of 2017 at the age of 67. And whereas Nancy Higgs passed peacefully while in hospice at Market Street Vieira on July 10, 2024, now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners recognizes and honors the dedication and accomplishments of Nancy Higgs and is grateful for her vision and efforts within the county and the lagoon. Done, ordered, adopted, in regular session this 27th day of August 2024. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Felton, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I'm going to do one more.
Okay.
Now, normally, this would be something that we would have on the agenda, but we had an opportunity here with the family today, and so I'm going to ask the board to approve this here. I make a motion that the board waive Board Policy BCC 58, naming county facilities and rename the park known as South Beach Community Park to Nancy Higgs Park, and utilize the South Beach Special Recreation District Municipal Services Taxing Unit, MSTU, to fund the signed replacements.
Motion on the floor, with a second by Commissioner Felton, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries graciously. God bless her for her work.
Sir, you're recognized.
I don't have a lot to say other than how honored the whole family is. Me, in particular, it's nice seeing people I know. And Rob, thank you so much for all your efforts and for attending the other day. Greatly appreciated. I know, I apologize for not getting a chance to get around and see everybody as much, but particularly apologize, Rob was at the very back of the service, and I couldn't see him, and I couldn't figure out who it was.
I was the least important person there.
Not true.
That's...
But this is a tremendous honor. Nancy would be thrilled, and we really appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Yeah, Commissioner Pritchett wants to say something?
I just wanted to mention, there's so much things that go on behind the scenes, and Commissioner Higgs, a few times, gave me a few phone calls and gave me some suggestions, and it was just always wonderful hearing from her, and especially if he did something that was well, she'd call you up and cheer you on. And Ms. Schmidt, I don't want to leave you out of that either, Commissioner. You've done the same, and I appreciate you so much, so thank you.
That's a very impressive group right there, I can tell you that. Yeah, yeah, let's go. Come on. If I go, you go. Hell, yeah. How do you want it, everybody? Get on the director. Get on here. Okay, cool. Get over here.
All right, Barbara. You want to get out of this? Oh, gosh. You got it.
Hold on one second.
Only one more time?
Yeah, hold on. Yeah, I'm always sorry. For those that don't know, Mrs. Arthur is Jason's mother.
Jason's who?
Okay, let's get back to business here. We're now on the consent agenda. Is there any commissioner that would like to pull any of these items on the consent agenda? I have those, I got.
Yes, I'm studying that.
Okay. We're going to pull F5 from the consent agenda, but if that's the only one we need pulled, let's go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent agenda until we, let's just get Sandra Sullivan up here, and we'll finish it up. Sandra, come on up. I couldn't hide your card this time because it's the only one I have. Darn.
Good morning, Sandra Sullivan. First of all, I want to thank you for some of the changes. This is Senate Bill 102, the Live Local, the one I call "You Will Own Nothing and Be Happy" law. And so I appreciate some of the changes that you made. In particular, one of them, if the proposed development is adjacent to two or more sides of a parcel zone for single-family within a residential development of at least 25 contiguous single-family units, the height shall be either, and it's restricting it to basically 150% of the single-family homes adjacent, or three stories. So I'm very appreciative to see that, and thank you. We had people fill this chambers in the past over such a development. There is one, however, I would ask you to make an amendment to. So under Senate Bill 328, changes, a county must consider reducing parking requirements, and they changed it from a major transit stop to a transit stop. And so in the changes that you made, it would be nice if there was some specific where it's considered, because it doesn't say you have to approve it, it just says you must consider it. So in your LDRs, in your land development regulations, as you have now, you, for example, protect the barrier island from bonus density, because we recognize that the barrier island is an issue, because we're 56.5 hours for evacuation, or critical evacuation deficiency. Lives can be lost when you put more density on the barrier island. So I would be appreciative if you would consider a change to amend this and say, "We'll be considered," but where you will not consider it. For example, because of the protection of the barrier island. And in fact, under 163.3 state statute, concurrency requires that you're no more than 16 hours in a category five, and we're 56.5 hours. So there's a legitimate basis for rejecting it, because essentially what this does, you know, a major transit stop is where you have like two bus stops, or you have bright line and a bus stop, and we're changing it to basically within a quarter mile of any bus stop. Now we can do, we can reduce the 20% parking requirement and put more density on a property. So I would very much appreciate it if you would consider the public safety aspect of the barrier island and add that restriction in there, which you can do, because it says you must consider, but you can have legitimate reasons for rejecting. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion on a consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
The motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Okay, let's move on, if we could, please. To, did you want to do this before public comments? Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Felton, please.
You all noticed that Commissioner Tobias is not here today, so there is no vice-vice chair. I don't have any Florida facts for you, but we do have a county employee recognition, and we wanted to do that because he deserves to be recognized. And so this was sent to us, Mr. Sean Kimball, who is a part of the renovation team, lead carpenter for Public Works, has been with the county about six months. And Sean is currently leading the team renovating parks and recs, restrooms throughout the county. His handiwork can be seen at the new Val M. Steele Park, where Sean and the team managed to complete the renovations ahead of schedule for the grand reopening. Sean is a father of five and grandfather of nine. He spends his days off traveling and cruising. When the weather is nice, he likes to take out his 28-foot bayliner. Where are you, Sean? Stand up, sir. Thank you. We appreciate what you do for Brevard County. Thank you.
All right, let's go on to public comments, please. The first card on public comments we have is Tom Erdman. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. So my name is Tom Erdman. I live at 4791 Squires Drive in Sherwood. And so I know Sherwood is not on the agenda today, but I'm here to ask you to consider delaying the vote for the Sherwood rezoning for three reasons. Number one, as we all know, three of you county commissioners will not be seated here starting in 2025, and that's when stuff is really going to start to happen. And so it's the new county commissioners that are elected will have to deal with the impacts of this vote. Then number two, you know, as a concern, I have not seen a soil sample result yet, and as we all know, old golf courses tend to have arsenic in the soil. And so when they start bringing their bulldozers in and everything, that soil is going to get moved around, wind's going to be blowing, and it's a carcinogenic that people and kids in the neighborhood could end up breathing in. And 10 and 15 years down the road, you know, our concern is that we can have an increase in cancer. And so we have not seen their dust mitigation plan, and I think this is vital for the safety of the local community. Then the third reason that I'm asking for a delay is, you know, it's not just Sherwood, you have Royal Oak, you have Birchwood there, you have so much development going on in North Brevard that it's time to put a little pause to it, and let's look at the entire picture and make sure we can leave our kids and future generations a North Brevard that we're happy with, that has the right environmental impacts and something we're proud of. Thank you.
Rumor is they're doing a soil survey, but all they've found so far is beer and Bloody Marys.
I'm sure it's a lot of beer.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Christian Fleming?
Christina.
Christina, okay.
I see that things are being deep cleaned over there. So I got some facts for you guys this morning. As of yesterday, we have lost 66 employees in fire rescue. 57 of them are in the field. That's 66. We still have four months left of this year. Seminole County is ratifying their fire contract today. They're ratifying it today, which means we're going to lose a lot more come October. Fire department is understaffed, fleet is understaffed, fire prevention is understaffed, road and bridge, parks and rec, we're all understaffed. And you've heard this numerous, numerous times. So with our fleet, speaking of that, we have brand-new engines, Engine 49 and Rescue 49. They're for a station that's opening up, that's not open yet. We're using those units to back up our supply right now. Rescue 46, who gives City of Cocoa their, whatever you want to call it, they were in Rescue 49, a brand-new unit that hasn't even been put in service, they had to use it. Engine 49 was used. It broke down in 42 hours of using it, a brand-new engine, brand-new. So with that being said, your term is not up until November. You are here until November. We voted you in until November. That is your job, your sworn job, your sworn duty, to stick up for the county, your employees, and your constituents. That is what we voted for you guys to be in here. We need you to do that. We need you to keep working until you leave. That is what you were voted in for. I have high expectations of people. I've always had high expectations that everybody would do their best, and that's what I expect. But lately, I've just been disappointed. Have a great day.
Thank you, Christina. Good morning, Katie.
Good morning, commissioners. This morning, I was coming to speak to you all about the Sherwood development. I hope that you all have a chance, or had a chance, to watch the planning and zoning meeting where this was talked about. And if you haven't, I urge you to please watch that, because the developer did mention that they have not finished the studies on this project. And so as this project will heavily impact the area, and it will be a huge topic of conversation for the coming year or so, I'm coming here to ask that you please postpone this vote on the rezoning, at least until all of the information is available with those studies and whatnot. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Katie, congratulations on the election, and I'm going to be praying for you to do a great job.
Thank you. I really, really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, Sandra Sullivan, I believe you are the last card before we carry on with the agenda. Is that at the end? Are we going to? Oh, that's for H, okay. Got public.
Okay, Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So at the last meeting, there was a last-minute add-on without proper notification to do with paying $1.71 million for a study of county funds on how to fund essentially the sewage system for Space Florida, which is an independent special district. And so I did a records request for a reference study that prompted that, and I was very concerned about what I read. So what is being proposed in the study that was done by the EDC is to do a tax increment reinvestment zone. So basically, tax the residents of District 1 and District 2 as a non-advalorem tax to pay for essentially a pipe putting in sewage from Space Florida to Sykes Creek as the first phase, and then later phase, which I don't think we'll ever get to, is kind of a crazy idea, to remove six sewage plants and to do a regional at Tyco. Seems more probable that between now and then, we will actually upgrade to AWT, because that's required by 2032. It also concerns me that at the recent Soral Meeting, here's proposed, this is Space Florida up here, this is federal lands, and then also on the federal lands, we're more than tripling the size of Space Florida. So there's a lot of plans that are not being communicated to the public. This is from the North Merritt Island Incorporated study that was a vote taken not per state statute under public comments. We know why now, because of the legal issues pertaining to North Merritt Island. Historically, the issue with North Merritt Island has been flooding. There was a small area study done that recommended rezoning to one unit, one unit per two and a half acres, and not one unit per one acre. The area of the hydrology study, a half a million dollar study done by the county, shows that this area where they want to put this additional development is in an area of increasing flooding. The entire area is like a giant bowl, and this time of year, when the river level is at its highest level, and we have a hurricane event, it floods, and there's no place to really pump the water. So the last part of the controversy is under the new Senate Bill 328, our state has now authorized to put density housing, under Senate Bill "You Will Own Nothing and Be Happy," probably workforce housing, on Space Florida lands on North Merritt Island. You're going to make these people's lands worthless. And I'm going to say one last thing, the federal government loses liability immunity when you use it for privatized purposes, and that makes other people liable, too.
Okay, then, let's move on, please, and go to public hearings. Who is going to? Jill, I knew that it was you. How are you this morning?
I'm good.
Good, Jill. Go ahead, please.
H1 requests the adoption of fire rescue schedule of rates and charges for hazardous materials, special operations team, standby response, fire prevention, and inspection rates.
Okay. Any comments? We have no cards on H1? No. All right.
Well, actually, I'm sorry.
I don't see one.
No, I don't think so.
No, we're good.
I'm sorry.
All right. Any discussion from the board? Motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. One down, Jill. You're up.
Okay. H2 requests the ratification, confirmation, and certification of the annual fire services non-advalorem special assessment tax rolls.
Okay, we have speaker cards. Sandra Sullivan.
So under the fire assessment, this is of course a non-advalorem tax, you have incorporated, as of a couple of years ago, a 3% CPI every year. And my objection all along on this is that we have right now a crisis happening in the county with our EMS and funding appropriate salaries for them. And so we did a few years ago a pretty hefty increase. What was promised with that increase is that we would use that to bring their salaries up to being to the surrounding area. When I look at the budget and I look at the numbers, what is actually happening is disproportionate shares going to meet growth. And while some of it was supposed to meet growth, it was supposed to address the salary issues within a couple of years and bring them up to where they should be. That did not happen. So why did that not happen? I mean, we have all this growth happening in Brevard County, and when you look at the graphs, the cost for the county for the cost of this growth, and the vehicles and the stations has gone way up. I think the number was $13 million. So what the problem is, until we solve the problem, is the EMS and fire impact fees that are the share of the developers, to pay their share of growth, is not to pay their share of growth is not happening. So, you put a CPI increase every year on the people. But you didn't do a CPI increase on impact fees every year. You know, if you're, if you're gonna tax the people, let's tax the developers as well for paying their share. But we need to address the fundamental issue. We need to address EMS and fire impact fees that have not been updated in thirty-two years. And we have all this growth. Everything has gone up in costs. A fire truck has gone up by threefold in cost. How many times have I come up before this commission over the years and discussed impact fees? And usually, I just get a blank look and nothing is said. Meanwhile, we have a huge number of people leaving. I was at the negotiations for fire. And they didn't even negotiate, your side didn't even negotiate. And good faith, you took something, went out to caucus, left us sitting there for an hour and forty-five minutes, came in and said, "See you later, guys. We're not gonna talk anymore today." When they said, "What about the other issues?" No, we're not talking about it.
Okay, then. Do we have any discussion from the board? Hearing, no discussion. Is there anybody who wants to make a motion, please? H-two?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Seconded by Commissioner Felton. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right.
Okay. H-three requests the adoption and certification of the annual stormwater utility non-advalorem special assessment rolls.
Any discussion? Commissioner Felton?
No, I'm ready to make a motion, sir.
Okay. Make your motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Commissioner Felton makes a motion to approve. Commissioner Goodson, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All signify by saying aye to approve. Nay for, the motion carries. Okay. Now, we are on H-four. Billy, hey. How are you, man?
Doing well, Commissioner. Thank you.
You're up, sir.
H-four is a public hearing to consider amendment to Section sixty-two dash two of Brevard County Code of Ordinances to remove a definition of major transit stop and to add a definition of transit stop in order to comply with changes to Florida statute.
H-four. Okay. Any discussion from the board? Are you, Sandra, did you wanna talk on this one, too? Okay, we might as well put you right up here in front. Come on.
Sandra Sullivan, there's no reason that both cannot be in your ordinances. The, the major transit stop is still a definition. There's a definition. By F dot, what that is, that's where, and this is a legal definition. It is when two or more types of transportation come together. That definition has not changed. There is, maybe you need to add a transit stop definition in light of the changes to Senate Bill three-two-eight. But the definition of a major transit stop is still the same. It's only in the context of the change of law of five-twenty-eight that you need the definition of a transit stop. But there may be reasons that you may need a major transit stop definition as well outside of Senate Bill one-oh-two. I would keep it in there. And I would suggest that in light of the pushback generally across the state on Senate Bill one-oh-two, we feel, we, people feel like we've just been sold out. You're putting our, this bill puts our communities at risk. And, and I would just generally as, say that in the research I've done of a bill that was very similar to Senate Bill one-oh-two without the mandate, this staff analysis by the state said, "This is a good bill because it doesn't mandate, it doesn't violate the state constitution." I don't know why Brevard County isn't, in fact, pushing back on Senate Bill one-oh-two as a violation of the state constitution for planning and zoning laws. But in the context of this, I would keep major transit stop because there is a legal definition by F dot. There may be other reasons you need to keep this in there. And add transit stop because they're two separate, different definitions. They are not the same thing. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the board? Hearing, no discuss, no discussion. Do I hear a motion, please? Commissioner Goodson moves to approve. Commissioner Pritchett, seconds. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. All right. Ed, how are you? Good morning.
Good, sir. Good morning.
Take it away.
Item H-five is the repeal of ordinance eighty-nine twenty-nine. This was an ordinance created in nineteen eighty-nine as a capital recovery. The project is complete, and we are just doing some house cleaning of repealing ordinances that are no longer needed.
Okay. Sandra?
So, per the agenda item, this is the area. And then here. When I go to the St. John's River Water Management site and I look up what's called a CUP, a consumptive use permit, you see that this, when you say this area is complete, according to the consumptive use permit where water is provided, there is no water service in this area. So, a lot of the lands, as you go west within this area, are owned by the St. John's River Water Management District when I looked up on the property appraisers. But it, it is kind of, I just think this is kinda interesting. And I'm just, you know, wondering whether I'm looking at surrounding properties that do not have water service out there per the consumptive use permit. And, you know, there's been some rumors of a developer coming in there. And so, I'll just say the optics on this perhaps don't look correct. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion from the board? Hearing, no discussion. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Commissioner Pritchett to approve. Is there a second? Commissioner Goodson, seconds. Any more discussion from the board? Hearing, none. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Okay. H-six. Yeah, Jill, go ahead.
H-six requests the adoption of the solid waste disposal assessment, solid waste collection and recycling special assessment, and the schedule of special rates and gate charges.
Okay, great. We have a card here from my old friend, Chris Romanetti. Chris, come on up.
Thank you, Commissioners. So, this has been brought to light because I've, I guess I'm a resident of Brevard, Chris Romanetti, for forty-one years. And when looking at these rates that are proposing to come in and overlooking the entire issue, I've gone through the budgets. It looks like it's a million dollars a week. It's a fifty-two-million-dollar budget to run the solid waste division now with all the different incomes they bring in. And we'll be closing Sarno Road soon. It's been, keeps getting pushed, but it looks like it'll be in March now. And what that's requiring us to do is to take everything to Cocoa. And when you do that, somebody like myself retired, it's only one trip per week. But I want to let you know, that's, that's, that's over twelve-hundred dollars a year more for me to go to Cocoa because, maybe not all of you that were here when it was decided, but somebody didn't figure out the dumps was gonna fill up and start the new one out on one-ninety-two years and years ago when it should've been planned so that there was a seamless transition. So, in doing that, not only, well, an average landscape guy that has somewhere around three loads a day, he'll be burdening about fifteen thousand a year in excess fuel if he's bringing it up from down at the south end of the county to Cocoa, just in his fuel bill. But more so, in the proposed changes that I think I understand today is that all the construction debris to commercial accounts, all these different accounts, I agree, should be now, start to be charged. I've looked at other counties, and that seems to be pretty reasonable. The major issue I have is in your yard clearing debris. I don't know if you've ever cleaned your yard up, or maybe you hired somebody to clean it up. But whoever you're hiring to trim your coconut trees and your palm trees is now into this provision going to be billed to bring it to the wasteland. So, in doing that, one cubic yard, it's about two full garbage cans, it's fourteen dollars and forty cents is what the cost is gonna be. Our trailers that you see all the landscapers in town running around, our seven, seven-ton trailers, fourteen thousand pounds, if they fill it up to what they're legally allowed to carry, it's three-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars a trip. Hundred trips a day is gonna be bringing in an extra eight million dollars for the Cocoa or each facility to bring this waste in. That's a lot of additional revenue. Now, when I had the chance to meet with Tom, the director, not too long ago, he came out and said, "It cost me forty-two dollars a ton to process this. So, we're gonna charge forty-seven." So, now, we're going to take the burden because we didn't raise the rates. If you look at your homeowner's tax bill, it used to be fifty-nine dollars. You all over the last few years raised it to sixty-three dollars per house. Not supposed to take care of maybe just your garbage. But at the end of the day, we could always bring our yard debris. If you brought it from your house, you didn't pay for it. Matter of fact, this says if you bring it yourself. But if your landscaper brings it, we are gonna charge. And so, that's where I think the burden is. We're gonna get hit heavy on the fuel till you get the new facility opened up. I hope you take that into consideration. And two, I think there's gonna be a riot up there come October one. These landscaping guys, I, I've been trying to get a permit, even though I'm retired for the last two weeks. You gotta go through the city of Melbourne and get a tax receipt. It takes about three weeks to go, or you gotta drive to Titusville to get theirs. I can't pull in. I got, I got, I got let loose the other day. You won't even take a credit card at the dumps to dump because it's in process, which could take two weeks just to get your gate permit right now. And I think those things all should be looked at to say, if you have to put it in, I think there should be a temporary time element to get people up to compliance. They have put up a bond. You have to put up a bond for two months' worth. There's a lot of, a lot of activity going there, so.
Thanks, Chris. Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your thing. Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Is it true that you could trim your bushes and cut them to the right length and leave them on the curb and they'd pick them up?
So, so this week, I loaded my trailer and dumped it out front and called Waste Management. They'll do, and they'll pick that up. And when we talked to Tom, I think somebody said somebody's gonna start looking into that. But today, that's true.
I thought so.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion? A motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett. Seconded by Commissioner Felton. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. All right. Now, we have H-seven, which is Jill.
H-seven is a resolution adopting the Melbourne Tillman Water Control District user fees. A public hearing was held in the district on August eighth, and all board members in attendance adopted the resolution.
Okay. So, you're on motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Goodson. Seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. There you go. I just wanted to make sure. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Absolutely. Let's take a five-minute break, please, if we could. Pardon me?
Bridge then previously acquired. We originally acquired twenty-two-point-three-six acres. This requires an additional point-two acres. It's for the construction of an air vac pump system, vacuum force main lines, lift station, and sewer service. The fair market value is one hundred and, one hundred thousand, three hundred dollars. And that's what the asking value is.
Okay. Anybody have any questions to revise to this? Do I hear a motion? Motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Goodson. Seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. All right. J-two, legislative intent and permission to advertise modifications. Virginia.
Good morning, Commissioners. You, too. This is to approve legislative intent and permission to advertise code modifications regarding the structure of the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Citizen Oversight Committee. The Citizen Oversight Committee recommends the board consider two changes. The first is that the current structure of the committee includes seven fields of expertise with a voting member and an alternate selected to represent each field. Those seven fields are science, technology, economics, real estate, tourism, education, and lagoon advocacy. To encourage future representation on the Citizen Oversight Committee by residents whose incomes are tied to the health of the lagoon, like commercial fishermen, fishing guides, clam farmers, and ecotour operators who experience the changing lagoon conditions out on the water daily, the committee recommends dedicating a field of expertise to lagoon commerce. This could be accomplished without increasing the size of the committee by combining the education field of expertise with lagoon advocacy. Second, in twenty-twenty-two, the board added eight-year term limits to all advisory committees via the county's uniform advisory board policy. These limits will impact fifty percent of the committee this year. This includes five of the seven voting members and two alternates who are in their eighth year of service. The result will be that no one on the future oversight committee will be cognizant of all the balancing act guided by county commission and public comments received since inception of the program. And the longest-standing voting members remaining, if reappointed, will have two years of service.